Wonderful, wonderful. Alright, welcome to the Bible class. For all those who may be new, or I'm gonna check through. Everybody here seems to be fairly regular. For those who were here last week, Tuesday, we finished the pill of past providence. And we looked at, we did an exercise where we looked at something that we were grateful for. And we ended on this particular exercise that eventually became homework, because we never had any time. So I don't know how many people actually did the homework. Or for those who weren't here on Tuesday, I'm going to give you 15 minutes. 15 minutes to see if you can put pen to paper and describe your own personal psalm. Please note, it doesn't have to be poetic. If you feel like, boy, that's not my kind of writing, you know the flowery language that David uses in most of his Psalms. Don't let the words Psalm discourage you. What I do encourage though is try to put as much emotion in this personal Psalm as possible. Some guidelines as to what you can put in the Psalm, but you're not limited to. Something that you were going through or are going through. How God intervened, or how you'd like Him to intervene. Also, your response to that intervention. Or what your response, promised response would be. So I'm going to give you 15 minutes. So until, that's until 11:33. And then we will go through. Those who want to share can share. And hopefully, we can learn from one another. And then we have one last activity after that. And that will be Bible class 4 today. So take your 15 minutes now, and let's get it going. Also, if you have any queries or questions, they can just send it in the chat. I'll leave the screen up so that you know exactly what you need. Alright, that's 11:32. For those who may not have finished in time, do not be discouraged. The opportunity lies for you to finish it at a later time period. So that is fine. As I said, homework like classwork, there is always points to be given. So I have one to share from Brother David. And I guess I'll share mine as well. But raise of hands for those who wouldn't mind sharing, so that we can get some responses. I see Brother Smith on my, on my kings. I presume that he's indicating his intent to share. Is that so, Brother Smith?
Yes, if you have the time.
I'm sure we'll find it. I'll start with Sister Endala, and then move to Brother Smith. I don't know if there's anybody else. I see Britannia sent her in the chat. I hope she don't mind me reading it out alone. Go ahead, Sister Endala, you can start.
Okay, good morning, everyone. This is just a very short Psalm of praise. So I'm going to begin now. "How excellent and wondrous is your mighty name! You have continually been our refuge and our fortress, our Torah of strength and our loving shepherd. So many times have we been cast down in the miry clay, unable to find our way. But you upheld us; you heard our despairing cry and our pleas, and you set our feet on higher ground, planted us safe and sound. Around us you wrapped your arms and declared, 'Never fear, I will never leave you nor forsake you, my loving children.'" That's the end.
Thank you very much, Sister Endala. I'm going to ask those who don't mind sharing, even if you don't share now or have shared, to send this to me all the same, so that I can put them together. And hopefully, we can have access to them afterwards. Because just listening to Sister Endala, I realize that this is something that we need to ensure that we keep. So thank you very much, Sister Endala. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
I thought it was Brother Smith's turn.
Go ahead, anyone's a question. I was going to work with the hand raises, and then go to Brother Smith.
O Lord, you are the master of my life. You took me out of fear, anxiety, and strife. With you by my side, I firmly stood tall. No wind, no foe could sway me at all. You are my God, my provider, my creator. As for me and my house, we humbly pledge to serve you forever. Full serve.
Thank you very much, Sister Smith. I was a little nervous with my poem, because I wondered if I'm going to be the only one who tries to rhyme. But hearing yours now, I have a little more confidence. Well, 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 put together, well delivered, Sister Smith. Alright, go ahead, Brother Smith.
I will send you mine, because this is not one that you need to keep, but it still has Psalm from me. "I was put down by men of different orientation. The issue was central to my education. The referral to my principal was critical. So imagine my strain, when instead of misery, by God's grace, I was awarded a birthday."
Excellent stuff, Brother Smith. Are you sure this one cannot be sent?
I can't send it, but you really want it?
Yes, ma'am, I want all of them, Brother Smith. I want all of them. Excellently done, Brother Smith. And very concisely and neatly arranged, might I add. Go ahead, Sister Grenell. Mom, you have unmuted your mic. Alright, whilst I wait on mom to sort out the technology.
Started.
Okay.
I can go ahead?
Go ahead, mom.
Awesome you are, O God, creator of heaven and earth, mighty and powerful, yet merciful and forgiving, loving the sinful. Your love, O God, you gave to us, your own son, to die for us. Lord, you know us inside out, how wretched, weak, and sinful we are. Your cleansing blood you gave to us, to save us from ourselves. All praise and thanks to you, O God, a God of mercy, grace, and truth. Praise your holy name, praise the Lord.
Wonderful, wonderful stuff, mom, wonderful stuff. Very, very emphatically written. Not seeing any other hands. So I'm going to read some in the chat, providing the people don't want to read them themselves. Britannia, I see you sent one in the chat. Am I supposed to read this, or you want to read it? Britania, there? Okay, repeat?
You can read it.
Okay, alright, no problem. Oh, I just seen where they can read it. Alright, a Psalm of Britannia. I love, I love the title. "Despite of my thoughts and sinful ways, you guide and protect me throughout my days. I seek your joy, your spirit ought to give, so that you, O Lord, can be pleased of the life I live. Tear after tear you've collected in jars, a room labeled Britannia, for all my scars. In spite of the people around me causing a lot of rage, I thank you, dear Lord, for strengthening me in order for me to see this age." Wonderful, wonderful, excellent, Sister Brit. Rhyme is my favorite literary device. So don't feel that I'm being biased when I sound a little more excited when I hear rhyme. That is just my particularly favorite literary device. A good, excellent job, Sister Brit. I have one here from Sister Paula that I'm I'm going to read. "Lord, creating me a stronger heart, give me the strength to be strong in my faith. Remove every fear from me, except the fear that I should fear you, Lord. Lord, I will trust and receive the strength that you promised me. I will be still and know that you are with me. That you, O Lord, will move every giant, every lion, and every bear that is in front of me, so that I can continue to worship and praise with all my heart." Wonderful, wonderful, Sister Paula, reading this. I'm sure people would hear this and not know that this is not one of the Psalms already written. Presume that this is Psalm 113 or something of the sort. Well done, Sister Paula. Alright, I have one here from my own Auntie Sally, Viljira Grenell. "Sleep eludes me once again. My eyes are washed with tears. I lay awake all night, lost in disturbing thoughts. To the Father of comfort I cried, O God, my shepherd who protects. Deflect these poisoned arrows with your staff of scriptural truth and rod of tender compassion. Hear me, O Lord, and answer me. I lay my request and wait expectantly." Boy, I can't read. "Then Abba, Father, answers. He will never leave or forsake me; I am never alone. He is my shepherd; I will lack nothing. He is my strength and my shield; I am protected. He died for me; he loves me to death. No circumstance or emotional battle I cannot handle. O God, you are my almighty warrior. Unto past in power, sit on cowards in your presence. Help me to remember in my darkest hour. I am truly never alone, and all my tears you have collected to avail me with your protection. At every onslaught, hallelujah." Amen, Sister Grenell, amen. And I know that that went a little beyond my 6 to 10 lines, but you know that you always get that extra preference. Any, any other that want, that individuals want to share? If not, I will share one that was sent to me by Brother David. Alright, not seeing any. Let me find that in my phone. Alright, um. I guess, I don't remember if David had allowed me to share the circumstances surrounding this. So if so, then I'll do so after. If not, I'll just read it. So it says, "When God says no, to whom do I turn? Where can I go? Is there any hope when God says no? I prayed so long and hard; I trusted him. I tried to do his will, and then I waited; I stood still. I waited for God to deliver; I waited for his hand of grace. I knew that he was able; I waited, but still no trace. No trace of the yes that I desired. I felt so lost, so disappointed. O my God, I was so tired. To whom do I turn? Where can I go? Is there any hope when God says no? I found it hard to pray; I didn't know what to say. But how could I stay away? God has always been my strength and stay, my shelter when the storms rage, my confidence to turn a new page. My God has been the light to guide my way, the hope that turns night to day. So now that he has told me no, where can I really go? There is nothing in the world for me; its emptiness is plain for all to see. To whom do I turn? Where can I go? Is there any hope when God says no? Can I turn my back on God? Can I forget all he has done? Can I ignore the times he has delivered me? Didn't he answer many other desperate pleas? Does no one know? Does one know, sorry, as painful as it may be? Does it cancel out all the yeses? Does it override his mercy? Does it mean that God does not love me? Wasn't Jesus killed on Calvary? Didn't he die for me? Didn't God refuse his plea as he cried, 'Let this cup pass from me'? To whom do I turn? Where can I go? Is there any hope when God says no? I won't pretend that I am not hurt; I can't deny the aching in my heart. I can't promise that I will never ask why, but I think I am ready to make a new start. So here is what I have learned. God may tell me no, and I may never understand why. But in spite of that, his love for me still shows. I see it in his mercy, in his grace. I feel it in his hands as he leads me through this place. I hear it in his words as he soothes my heart. I see it in Christ's nail-scarred hands as he gives me a new start. So to whom do I turn? Where can I go? Is there any hope when God says no? I will turn to my heavenly Father, because there is nowhere else to go. I will cling to him, I'll cling to my hope in him, because he knows best, even when he says no. Very, very powerful, very, very emotion-filled. And I got the go-ahead to share. So David, David wrote this before, so the length, you'll understand. He said he was in one of the darkest times in his life. It was when he and his wife Sandra didn't think that they would have been able to have kids. Said it was a tough, tough, dark time. And you can see a lot of the struggle being brought up in, in that poem. But as we know, Shaun and Elliot before Covid have always been running up and down in the building. So even the know that he had prepared himself to accept and had eventually accepted, turned out to be a yes. And that is, that is immense encouragement for us for the things that we may be struggling with. Sometimes God is waiting for us to accept the no, waiting for us to be in the state of mind to say, okay, God, let me trust you. Let me put my hope in you. And then we may very well get the answer that we wanted. Mind you, we may not get it. But if we trust that, that is what God wants for us, then we'll be in a better position than we were before. So thank you, Brother David, very encouraging to read. And if anyone wants to hear it, providing David has no issue sharing, then I'll make it accessible to those. Any, any others? If not, then I'll quickly share mine, and then we'll move into the next activity that we have planned for this Bible class. Not seeing any, alright. A Psalm by Stephen. "I have walked in the darkness with my own feet; I have strolled into the sanctuary of sin and taken a seat. I have watched your calls go to voicemail; blew ticked your messages; sent your emails to spam, but still used you in my references. I have been lost by choice; I have been broken by my own intent. I have pretended not to hear your voice; I have pretended to repent. You hold the flame that could cause me to burn, but you use it to light the way back, waiting for me to return." I want to thank everybody that shared, everybody that participated, even if it was just in writing years. And as I said, I'm asking those who have already written to send those to me. Those who want to read, to write, can send it to me at a later point as well. And also, of course, points shall be given to those who participated. So thank you very much. One quick other activity. Hopefully, we can get it, we have enough time. So, alright. Alright, wonderful, everybody can see the screen? Somebody say yea or nay?
Yea.
Alright, so we're going to, we're going to be doing a revision before we move on in our class. On Sunday, we have covered a good amount of information in a good amount of weeks. And I don't want the passage of time to erode what we have learned thus far. So we're going to have a quick revision in a quiz format. Naturally, the points that will be garnered from this quiz will be going towards your teams. So I'm encouraging you to, I think I remember all of the teams that you are in. If not, I'll just ask you to remind me by putting it right beside your name, please. Those who know which team they are in, just put it beside your name, so that I don't give the points to the wrong set of individuals. I presume everyone is familiar with the hand raising feature. That is what I will be using to determine who will answer first. Correct answers will gain you two points, because I'm encouraging participation. I will not take away any points for incorrect answers. Alright, so very lenient today. The categories are scripture fill in the blanks. You're going to see a scripture that has been used in the Bible class thus far. There's going to be a blank, I need you to tell me what the blank is. I understand differences of versions, but it's going to be the one that I used. Cases, you're going to see information based on some of the cases that we've looked at. You're going to need to answer those. Prescriptions, the answer are prescriptions that were given in class thus far. Two words, you're going to see a description that is referring to an answer that was covered in class that has two words in it. You will be given the letters that they start with, so you need to tell me what the answer is. So if it is big head, then you'd see the letters B and H. And the new words, these are some words that I presume, well, I learned some of them, and I presume we also learned some of them as we went through the Bible class. So hoping that you haven't forgotten them thus far. We will begin with scripture fill in the blanks. I will just open that one. And as I said, if you know, you think you know the answer, just raise your hand. You get it correct, then your team get points. Alright, everybody clear on that? Any questions? Now is the time to ask before we start? Alright, wonderful. Alright, let's get it started. Go ahead, Brother Jason.
What is gold?
I will accept, I will accept. Gold, golden, very similar. Why it's not coming up? Okay, there we go. Alright, good job. So as with Jeopardy, Brother Jason, you can now choose exactly where you want to go.
Let's try two words for four.
Alright. Go ahead, whether this is Sandra or David, go ahead.
Uncircumcised, philistine.
That is correct. Alright, David, where we going?
Let's stay with two words for six.
Alright. Go ahead, David or Sandra?
Fear-minded.
Fear-minded is correct. Don't come out here to play at all. Where we going, David? David, you need to tell us where to go.
Let's, let's stay with it for eight.
Alright. Oops. Go ahead, go ahead, David. You have five seconds.
So sorry, I thought I was, I think it's the last time that was up.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, let me take it. No problem. Five seconds. Three, two, time up. Answer is flock behavior, flock behavior, curfew and late. Please remember, there are no penalties for wrong answers. So you can always guess. David, staying with two words?
For ten.
Alright.
My hand is up.
Alright, go ahead, brother. Go ahead, Brother Smith.
I'm gonna find the first. Deep, deep perception.
Alright, that is correct. Where we going, Brother Smith?
Stephen, two words.
Twelve?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright. Go ahead, Paula.
Oh, did I win, correct?
Yes, you did.
Chorus correction.
That is correct. Where we going to the, Paula?
Same place.
Same place?
Oh, two, what about two?
Okay, go for two, alright. Go ahead, Brother Jason.
Simon says.
Simon says he's right. Alright, we're finishing it up, Brother Jason? Or moving?
Yeah, we'll finish it up for 14.
Alright. Go ahead, Brother Jason.
Yes, so it's, do I have to enter both, or just pick one of the two?
Want to give me one of them, then you get it.
Okay, is it? Virgin wife?
Incorrect. Anybody else wants to go? Five seconds. Go ahead, I think David's hand.
There's no penalty, right?
No, no penalty. No, no penalties.
Vicious wives?
Incorrect. Go ahead, Britannia.
Is it vexed wife?
Incorrect. Nobody else? Alright, time up. Britannia, you got close. What is it, rival wife or vexed woman? Rival wife or vexed woman? Brother Jason, where we going?
Let's try prescriptions for six.
Alright. Five seconds. Go ahead, Britannia.
Is this Apollo's acupuncture?
Incorrect.
Alright.
Go ahead, brother Smith?
Berry and something, somebody come first, finish it.
Okay, I'll talk to him.
Brother Smith, we need a, we need a complete answer from you, sir.
My hand is up.
I, I see David, I, I wish I had brother Smith's time.
Been distracted, so I think, you know, I need another five seconds.
I, I, I hear you, I hear you, sir. We starting it from five now, five? Alright, time up, grand brother Smith. Go ahead, David.
Bury and brain transplant.
That is correct.
We wouldn't get it in on.
Alright, David, where we going? David?
Prescriptions for it?
Alright. Go ahead, David.
Apollo's acupuncture.
Incorrect. Go ahead, Britannia.
Priscilla's patch.
That is right. Britannia, where we going?
Prescription for two.
Alright. Brother Smith, I take your mic unmuting at your hands. I presume that you want to answer, brother Smith?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You love past providence.
That is right. Alright, where we going, brother Smith? Brother Smith? Alright, since brother Smith.
What's the prescription for? Britannia, please get ready.
Alright. Alright, let's go. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Pill of present tense?
That is right. Alright, brother Jason, where we going?
Let's try cases for four.
Alright. Go ahead, brother David.
Just said, just said the name of the person?
Yeah, man, just the name.
Apollo's.
Apollo's is right. So, the cases will literally be the names of the people that we looked at. David, where we going?
Cases for six.
Alright. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Sir Ri.
You're not wrong, but that's not what we're asking for. Go ahead, brother David. Here, Ram is correct. Go ahead, David, you staying there?
Yes, let's, let's in.
Alright. Go ahead, David.
Saw, I think saw.
That is right. I see David, David, join the lead chapter back into the lead.
No, we're in the lead.
Alright, total points, David, not in this game I'm talking. Where we going, David?
Ten, no, sorry, twelve cases.
Alright. Go ahead, David.
Said every one of them after you minus two. Was it the prophets, the twelve prophets?
Incorrect.
No, 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 no. Was it?
Correct. Go ahead. Kirk, I can't hear you.
Was it the spies?
I need the number, sir, the amount of the spies I said. Go ahead, Kirk?
The eight spies.
Incorrect. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Twelve. I'm sorry, ten, ten spies.
I would have normally said wrong answer come first, but since I'm being lenient, I'll, I'll give you ten spies. Brother Jason, where we going?
Yeah, let's do cases for fourteen.
Go ahead, David? Five seconds. David, have the, and David, you need.
Sense, oh geez.
Is that the answer?
No.
Five. Three, two, one, time, so brain freeze that, David. Anybody else?
Yes, may I have?
Go ahead.
Is it Jeroboam?
Incorrect. Go ahead, Kirk?
I tell the story behind it?
No, I don't want the story behind it, Kirk. I want the name.
What, Rehoboam?
Um, Jericho, I'm just calling a name, I don't know.
Alright, incorrect. Go ahead, Jesus Smith?
Is it Rehoboam?
It is Rehoboam, that is right.
You said the wrong one.
I think brother Smith said Jeroboam.
No, it's my turn.
I heard he said Rehoboam afterward, but I heard Jer, Jeroboam first. Jesus Smith, where we going? Jesus Smith, you need to tell me where to go.
Ten scripture fill in the blanks.
Alright. Go ahead, David?
Saved.
Incorrect. Go ahead, Kirk?
What is rescue?
Incorrect. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Delivered.
Delivered is right. And please note, saved and rescued are words that meant the same as what was used, but seeing as we're using my translation, delivered is what we're looking for. What's that, David?
Which translation are you using?
I that said, did you take, go find it? But I think I used NIV. Go ahead, brother, brother Jason? Where we going?
Ah, let's do fill in the blanks for eight.
Go ahead, David?
Cubits.
Cubits is right. Where we going, David?
Same for twelve.
Alright. Go ahead, David?
Orange?
Incorrect. Go ahead, Kirk? Kirk?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking dry?
Incorrect. Go ahead, Jesus Smith?
Could it be strength?
It could be and it was. Good job. Where we going to, brother Smith?
Fourteen, fill in the blanks.
Alright. Go ahead, David?
Deep?
That's a deep answer, but unfortunately, it's not the one we are looking for. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Slimy?
Incorrect. That sounds like a horrible fit to be in. Go ahead, the end dollars?
Horrible, horrible?
I hope I never gave it away, man, so while I go, but yeah, horribly, the correct answer. That one, that came out without intent. Alright, where we going, sister Endala?
Prescriptions for ten?
Alright. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Christ copying chemotherapy.
That is right.
Oh, Christ copying.
Take over from chapter. And where we going, brother Lakon?
Let's try new words for two.
Alright, but never watch a blue over here.
Hand up.
Go ahead, brother Smith?
Scat a brain.
That is correct. Where we going, brother Smith?
Stay with it.
For four?
Okay.
Alright. Go ahead, David?
Mary? Mayor?
Alright, given the leniency, I'll give you that Maya is right. We're looking for the noun, not the adjective. Where we going, David?
Same six.
Alright.
Hand.
Go ahead, brother Smith?
Bark.
Bark is right. Staying there, brother Smith?
Yes.
Alright. Go ahead, David?
Hello?
Hello, I'm not sure if that's how it's used, but that is correct. That's not like you answer the phone, aren't you? Where we going to say, staying there, David? Okay, a new word for ten. Go ahead, David?
Sure.
Incorrect. Go ahead, Britannia?
Incline?
Incorrect. Go ahead, David?
Craggy.
Craggy is correct.
Yes.
Where we going, David? I like that two thousand.
Twelve.
Alright.
Yes, hand.
Go ahead, brother Smith?
I.
Repeat?
I.
That is correct. Alright, we're staying there, brother. Just finish it up, brother Smith.
Go ahead.
Alright. Go ahead, sister Smith?
Is Z E U G M A, Zuma?
That is correct, that is correct.
Yes.
Where we going to, brother Smith?
Um, case is it?
Alright. Go ahead, David?
Thomas.
Thomas is right. Where we going, David?
Finish up case.
Finish up cases, alright?
Hand.
Go ahead, go ahead, brother Smith?
Iran.
Iran is right. Where we going, brother Smith? Brother Smith, where we going? Keep, fill in the blanks.
Prescription spell. I'm gonna try catch up.
Go ahead, Britannia?
Apollo's acupuncture.
There we go, this one is Apollo's acupuncture. Alright, Brit, where we going?
Staying.
Mission, alright. Go ahead, Kirk?
What if he is pill of present tense?
No, that's not right. Go ahead, brother Jason?
Is it pill of past providence?
Repeat? Brother Jason, repeat? I never heard it clearly.
Sorry, pill of providence?
Incorrect. Sister Endala?
Pill of, pill of future promises?
Incorrect. Go ahead, sister Britannia?
Pill of post promises.
Pill of what?
Post promises.
That is right. Pill of post promises. Just like that. Well, it's the same theme, sister Endala, so you're good. Um, Britannia, where we going? And what is this type?
Uh, four.
Go ahead, David?
Gospel.
Gospel is correct.
Hmm, gospel, yes.
Chapter builds an inas, unassailable lead. Well, let's see who is going to come second. Fill in the blanks for six. Go ahead, David?
Daily, daily.
Daily is right, daily is right. Alright, excellent, excellent job, excellent job, I have to say. Very excited that the results are. Clearly, things have been taught. Congratulations to chapter for winning, for winning this particular revision. As we go along, we're going to try and, and keep the brain fresh. I know that we have a good amount of weeks that we go through, but we want to make sure that, hey, we can, you know, in a competitive but educational manner, keep the revision going. So, thank you for your participation and the four minutes that I went overtime. I'm sure nobody will complain, especially in that chapter. I'm sure nobody will complain, especially in that chapter. Password. Go ahead, Jesus Smith.
Lion, giant, bear. No, it...
Hola, hola, hola.
No, let me say.
Wait, wait, wait. Britannia, go ahead.
Yes.
Britannia, you're the next hand. Go ahead.
Lions, giants, and bears.
Bears, right.
And, and what is this thing that does next?
The what?
The add. They were supposed to...
Yes, the plural form. Oh, dear me.
But good job. Good job, guys. The password.
That's what I said last week.
The password for next week is pill of post-promises. Pill of post-promises, and no angle. It is not repeated, just the one time. All right, thank you again, guys, for your participation. Just a reminder for those who haven't sent but have read their Psalm, can you just send it to me, please? All right, handing over to the last individual who's supposed to do announcements. I don't know if that is true.